2022, yeah, seven oh.
Sorry.
Do you have?
Kerry, turn your mic on here.
I'd like to call the Sparta Township Zoning Board of Appeals meeting to order on Wednesday, December fourteenth, twenty twenty two at seven P M. Uh, let's start out with the pledge of allegiance. If we can all rise, take our move our hats.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on the agenda is a review for additions corrections to the agenda. So is there anything that we need to correct or make changes to this? See anything?
Was there anything that we needed assigned from last time?
No, I don't think there was a decision in order. Okay, if there's no additions or corrections, let's move on to the next item of the agenda, which is review and approval for corrections of the minutes from the August third, twenty twenty two regular meeting. And I know we just got a copy of these, so we'll take a minute to read through it. And I know we just got a copy of these, so we'll take a minute to read through it. Dale, do you know, did we ever sign the decision in order for this last one? For this uh? For the May eleventh meeting? Usually those come the following meeting, we get them signed, so. That's something we're gonna have to maybe make a note to. Follow up. Is it? Well, I think the wording behind it clarifies it. You know, because they spell it out. Chills, three going the end. Okay. You abstaining. Right. And zero names. Okay. So, and it's in that same sequence as well. Okay. I think that's fine. It goes reverse sequence and then say right. Any issues with this paragraph right here on this reading? I'm getting number and being unaware. Yeah, they didn't. You remember back in the meeting, we talked about it. And they didn't inform him when he did his split that that was, he wouldn't be able to get. Right. Yeah, I remember that. Yeah. All right. Yeah, he did state that. Yeah, okay. Yep. Um, the only thing I noticed here is. Ken, at the very top of our minutes here, it says absent. Um, but I was an alternate then, and that's why I was here. Um, I don't know if we need to put that as him being absent. I don't know if that should be worded differently.
I had to recuse myself because I had a planning commission.
Yeah, you were not here.
Yeah, I couldn't.
He was absent.
I actually couldn't be here.
Okay.
They wouldn't let me come to. Because I'd already, I'd already um. On our planning commission, we had already dealt with something similar to the same issue, so. You can't be on two boards.
Yeah.
Same thing.
It doesn't state the reason why you're absent.
Right, that's all. It just, it looked like I was just absent. I guess, I would like to at least reflect that I, the reason why I was absent was because I couldn't actually physically be. Or attorney told us that I couldn't.
Okay, so we can make, uh, if you want, you'd be able to make a motion to include that in, and we can approve them.
The corrected minutes?
With the, with the correction.
Okay.
Okay. Then we could handwrite it in or. Or you'll catch, you'll, you'll capture that in the notes or.
And I can do it that way. Do you want to make a motion on that it should read? And Humphries absent due to a conflict, or do you want not?
I recused myself because of planning commission conflict.
Okay.
Yep, that makes sense.
Yes. Yeah, perfectly.
That way, years from now, somebody goes back and says, boy, that can never fill up.
Bergman will watch their maps and see, don't say that.
Even attendance.
There's more truth to that than what you know, isn't there? Okay, so do you want, we have a motion on the table that? To approve the minutes with that?
Yes, I make that motion with that change.
Do we have, do we have a second?
The board.
So Mike? Ken has the motion you want to.
Chairman. Um, could you? Repeat names since I don't know everybody all that well, when they make a motion that.
Ken Humphrey makes. Ken Humphrey makes a motion to approve the minutes with a slight change that he recruited. He was himself.
Second by Mike, thank you.
And then Mike Lockard second.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carried unanimous. Next item on the agenda is a public comment. There will be public comment again after we open up the discussion for the next topic, so this is. If there's any other concerns not related to uh what's coming up, so. Let's open it up for public comment. Anyone? Okay, at this time, I'd like to close the public comment portion and move on to our business items. Uh, we have one item on the agenda tonight, and that is a. The public hearing uh for Midwest V. Parking variance request at ninety two thirteen Sparta Avenue. And uh, do we have anyone here from Midwest representing? And state your name and.
Evening, Jared Dvorzny from Midwest V LLC and West Wing Construction. Here with um Joe from E N G, and T J from Fishback, um they're gonna run you through. A few different things with the plans and some parking and uh. Then I can answer any questions you have.
Sounds good, thank you. Yes, pull it right up there.
Thank you.
And uh. Yeah, feel free to move. Uh, adjust your chairs if you need to see it. But if you'd rather see a big copy as well. And uh.
We even have a small copy.
Got something?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, Jared, so my name is Joe Westerby with E N G Engineering and Surveying, I'm the civil engineer for this project. Um, Projects is located on a four point three acre piece of property at the northwest corner. Of Sparta Ave and Eleven Mile Road. Um, the property is zoned as Z one or C one commercial and A G two agricultural. Um, the existing structure on site has been used for a veterinarian office. And the property to the north is also zoned as commercial. Um, the property to the west is zoned as agricultural. And the property to the east and south are also zoned as commercial. Um, the properties to the north here and to the west are currently being, being, you have a residential use on that. Um.
Directly to the north, like.
Yeah, right.
Even, yeah. As a residential, even though it's zoned.
Commercial, correct. Um. So just giving an overview of what we have on the sheet here, so we've got a ten thousand six hundred forty square foot building shown here in the middle. All the parking that we're proposing is to the east, um it's thirty three parking spaces. Um, we've got a loading zone, trash enclosure north building. North of that, we're planning to have um the septic system. To the west over here, we're planning to have the well. And down in the south here, we're planning to have the tension pond to outlet to the road commissions. Um, storm service system. Um. You can see here too, we're, we're trying to maximize the buffers that we're keeping from the adjacent um residential properties too, so we have a pretty large. Um, buffer here, somewhat of a buffer up on the north side here too. Um. At this point, we have submitted to the road commission for the driveway. And to the health department for the um well and septic permits, and we're well along the way of good permits. Um. So we're here tonight to get a variance for thirty three parking spaces, the total required, some ordinance is seven long parking spaces. Um. Velcro has constructed similar sized developments like this throughout the state. Um, thirty to thirty five partner spaces adequate to this size retail development, um. Given there's pretty, there's typically a pretty short duration um visit. Um, Jared and T J will talk more on this in a few minutes here. Um, but overall, the. The additional forty parking spaces would set empty. Um, there's also a couple other um. Benefits of the reduced parking that I want to highlight. Um, one of them, if we do have to include um the additional parking. It's gonna end up pushing up further to the north. And it's gonna end up pushing the building further towards the west, so it's gonna cut into those buffers somewhat. Also with additional parking. Um, it's more impervious paved area, which means more stormwater runoff. Um, which means this basin will end up getting bigger, and we'll show you some. Examples of what the site might look like if we do put all those parking spaces in. Um. And given the soils out here too, as many of you might know. West storm water runoff will be a positive here, so. Um, those are the main things I want to touch on, so I think T J will give you. Um, some info on the traffic study.
Good evening. My name is T J Lichten, and I'm an engineer with Fishback, um. My specialty area is in traffic, parking and safety, uh so. Jared contacted us to perform a park traffic study for the site. Uh, I recognize that you haven't had a chance to, to look at or take this in yet. Um, so without getting in the weeds too far, uh a little overview of what we did, um. Typically, when, when we do traffic or parking studies, we try and figure out how much traffic, how much parking demand there's going to be. And our primary source of reference for that is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So this study was based on standards, guidelines, data published by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. We look at what type of use there is and what size it is and. Forecast how much traffic and parking demand there will be. Um, the traffic portion of the study is. Uh, more apt to the county road commission, the permanent application, but it's in there for your reference as well. Think the matter at hand this evening is more. Specific to the parking demand variance, which uh that information can be found on page three. Um. When we're, we've been asked to do studies like this, and I've done studies in over my career for both municipalities and private clients that. Uh, when the concern comes up that we, we either have too much parking or not enough parking for a site design relative to ordinance. Uh, and in this case, uh, the applicant is, is confident on their business side that. Um, the ordinance requires too much parking for what they would require, and as was mentioned. There's downsides to that in terms of stormwater runoff space, what it does in pushing things north on the site. Uh, so they asked us, we know what works for our business, what, what does the national data say? Uh, and can you please include that in a study? So that's what we did. Um, for this type of use in this size. On a typical weekday, uh the, the highest hour, which is five o'clock to six o'clock in the afternoon. Uh, the site can be expected on average to uh demand twelve parking spaces at a, at a given time. That's the, the average peak demand. Uh, if you look at the statistics and the other data points that are published by I T, the eighty fifth percentile, which gives a little higher cushion. Or turnover and circulation, um, the, that number is nineteen parking spaces. Uh, if you go even a little more conservative. Um, and I don't know the Dollar, Dollar General, this applicant is necessarily, um. This use would be um. Peaking at Christmas time and the shopping season like that, but. Um. The, the December peak for any type of retail use is typically a little bit higher, so there's. There's data published as well for specific to December. It would be a little bit more conservative than the typical weekday, and that, that peak number is twenty five, so. Uh, at worst case, you would have a site demand of twenty five vehicles that are trying to park at one given time. Uh, with thirty three spaces, you would still have a buffer for turnover and circulation. Uh, and the benefits of not constructing. Uh, a great deal of additional impervious surface. So those are the findings of our study relative to. Uh, the parking demand for the site and this use, uh for your considerations even. If you have any other questions on the traffic or parking, I'd be happy to answer.
So employee parking is part of these thirty three spaces?
That's correct, that's employees and visitors.
So how many employees, or don't you know that?
I'm going. Sure, Jared.
Okay.
I mean, so typically, we Dollar General would have, um. Two to three employees at a time at the store.
Okay.
Um, so.
So that cuts your parking spaces down to thirty. Thirty one being recommended, right? I had that wrong.
Thirty three.
Thirty three, okay, propose. Okay, well that brings you down to thirty spaces.
Three employees each driving. Fifty thirty.
Correct. Um, so yeah, I think. Looking at. What Joe proposed here would be kind of a typical layout for us, um I know, I believe in your packets. There's also a letter from Dollar General, who's our client. Kind of referencing what their sweet spot is, I know, looking at their stores nationwide, they've done. Quite a bit more than we have, but through my career and. The couple hundred stores that we've done, it's kind of fallen within that sweet spot of thirty to thirty five, depending on, on layout and everything.
So can you tell me how many stores Dollar General's closed this year?
How many they've closed this year? I do not know that often.
Variance lives with the property, it doesn't, it doesn't go away if they close a store. And so that's probably one of my biggest concerns is. You know, uh, I work for Gordon Food Service, we close stores from time to time, and we're moving open different ones. Well. Any variances you get with that property, if you close it because you want to move it down the road or do something else. They live with that property, and so if another business came in. Is that parking lot sufficient to support another business? That's, you know, that's probably one of my biggest concerns. Is, I've been in the retail industry for twenty six years. And know how this works, where they open it up and they close and they open and they move. You know, it's all business decisions.
No, it's about the point, I, if there is. I can tell you from our business model that the. Without getting too deep into the weeds on the lease, that it's a fifteen year lease with fifteen on the back end, depending on how the store performs. For, for that scenario, if the store was to change to a, a different use, would that require? Going back to site plan review?
Somebody could buy it and the variant stays with the property.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that, I thought the change of issue had to go back to site plan.
No. And so that, that's one of my concerns is we're not just approving this for Dollar General, we're approving this. For the property, which is a retail piece of property.
And I, and I totally understand that, I think. And we can look at this in terms of a few different things, I think, looking at the parking variance and. And I know everyone is slightly different, and we've come into this issue a few times throughout our years and. And I know in talking to, to Dale, it doesn't seem that you guys have dealt with a lot of parking variances in the past, which. I guess frankly surprised me a little bit with how the ordinance is written. Typically, one of the differences I noticed that we would see is the usable floor that I know we talked to Kevin about and. How it's written in, in the ordinance. With the township is specific to just general square footage of the building. Whereas. In, in our building, we have basically this whole. Twenty five feet here is storage and restrooms and offices, which. In the equation equates for twelve and a half parking spaces for this twenty five foot stretch here, which. To have. Twelve people in kind of a storage room doesn't, so that was one thing I noticed, I don't know. Necessarily. When the last time the parking. Ordinance was really looked at, but that was one of the things that we saw in, in looking at it. And, and I think we can show you too.
Have you approached the board at all about the possibility of changing? The. Um, the way the zoning ordinance is written for that?
We have not. Um, I think, I know obviously with the Z B A, there's. Big emphasis and concern with setting precedent, and I think. That is case in point here, but in looking at. What I've seen over the years in retail, as you know, there's, there's not as much demand for that in-person interaction and that. You know, brick and mortar type store, so what we've seen specifically over the last five years is. With communities that have looked at that requirement, they're going from a hundred and fifty per square foot usable floor. They're going from a hundred and fifty per square foot usable floor area to two hundred and two hundred and fifty. So I think when. Looking at. The way things are going in retail that. You know, setting a precedent tonight with a variance wouldn't necessarily be a bad thing for. Not only this. Development or property, but for future development, future commercial to come into the township, because. Looking at it, not every piece of commercial property in the township is this large, thankfully. If it's deemed necessary by the ZBA that we need to install these parking spaces. We can. It's going to add roughly like fourteen thousand square foot of impervious surface, which is. About a Dollar General and a half, but. Thankfully, we can accommodate that. It's just gonna create. A sea of asphalt and concrete that's not necessary.
One of my concerns too is the fact that at this point it's somewhat its own island, it's kind of its own entity out there. For example, across the road, you have two oh one, you have the hardware store, you kind of share parking and it kind of. It can help in certain times, but at least some overflow, um. You, at this point, it just the. Time when you have more than thirty-one people there. I don't know where they're gonna park, and I don't think there's a good solution for that, um, other than either on eleven mile or. We wouldn't be on Sparta Avenue, I don't think. So I'm a little concerned because there's no other businesses, you know. Similar to where you're at now or. Dollar General's at now. That seems to be a little bit of concern of mine.
Yeah, and I understand that, I think it's it's definitely hard to tell if I want to cross street, like you said, the shared parking, but I've done. Like I said, a couple hundred of these developments and. From a pure development standpoint. I don't know that I've ever seen thirty cars in the parking lot, even when we're kind of. Rushing to get the store stocked and kind of all the construction activities and and finishing it, so.
To your point, I I'd go to Dollar General in Kent City and stuff, and that is similar where it has its own parking and I've never seen a problem.
And that's a very busy one, we did that a number of years ago.
So I I I get what you're saying, it kind of goes back to what Terry said too, it's like. To customize it for. You guys, we can agree with everything that you say, at least me. And it really comes to a point where. We're kind of dealt a set of cards that the way our rules are up to a point that we. Gets a little bit of a weird deal where you start to change based on a client. Terry's point, if it goes with the property, the client may change, so.
Which is a fair point, I think we do have some options here, just showing. What it would look like. In terms of. Kind of how the spin would be different, so. It it definitely can fit, it drastically changes the whole look and layout of of the space, so. Looking at really taking away. Any sort of. Buffers of the property of of the surrounding use of to. Uh, not only eleven mile, but to the north and then kind of. Taking up a lot of that, uh. Property there to the east and west.
Well, I hear in that other drawing there. Opens up the opportunity at some point in time in the future, if you wanted to tap into eleven mile as another egress. That that could be done where the retention ponds on the other ones. Prevents that as well, so. That's one thing I didn't know, if. You know, whatever's in there. The in and out, when when you get a lot of traffic coming in and out, you know, I've been in some of these tight, tight parking lots, but where you're trying to get in. And turn around and it it jams up pretty quick.
From a conversation with the road commission, I'm at this point, I hope they're able to allow. That to go through there, you know, here was, um. You know, they have, they are paying this location, but this distance, the intersection was close, so I, I know that's where there isn't a driveway right now, but I don't think. You know, I don't think they would allow that, even if we wanted to break it all the way through there in the future.
Is that because it's kind of more of a residential street and potentially the. I can understand that, he wouldn't want that extra traffic flow potentially on eleven mile versus where the. Four lane road is.
Right, and I think in general, they just like to keep them, you know, every town's got their different standards of. That driveway distance from the intersection, like they're putting that.
So there's no opportunity to move that back further on eleven mile and not have the entrance?
It, I don't know how it reads, if you could have. Uh, the entrance, if you had second entrance. Uh, coming off the ag two.
I don't know about that, we didn't really take it much farther after we spoke to them initially, I mean, this was the main entrance that we were looking for. I mean, it's always nice to have a secondary entrance, for sure.
Either drawing, if if. You did want it, it could be added through the ag two, and and I know it's not the building, but I don't know if you could have a drive through the ag two.
Yeah, it gets a little tricky there depending, I think we would just look to stick with the.
Yeah, initially starting out, I understand that, that's.
So this property is. What it's zoned as C one and ag two?
Yeah, there's a line. Split zoning, um, and I think Kevin was the one that pointed this out, it's. What was it, the three hundred foot in in the zoning ordinance somewhere?
If the first three hundred feet along Sparta Avenue, Sparta Avenue back is zone commercial and the the rest of the parcels on.
It doesn't, when you, when they do the master plan, they lay it out like that, they they don't look at it because each piece of property could be different. And if you get it, it would. Jock like that, so they just draw a straight line across the three hundred feet. Yeah.
Because either one of your options.
How big is that?
Ag two is that dotted line?
Your current layout that you're requesting, how big is the buffer to the north? How big is that buffer? Seventy-four, and then with the new dry. If the the one you were just holding there.
It would be, it would be about fifteen-ish.
Okay, so you're losing twenty, twenty probably.
Yeah, basically the road parking.
Yeah, and you still want to put septic right there.
Septic's there, so I don't have to put it out there, so.
So your perk test you've already done or the borings at all, and that's where they approved the septic second?
Correct. Is it raised bone? Are the detention ponds below grade? Are they? Are they tank system?
No, it'll be in the northern basin.
Really?
It's just for runoff water, so it's.
I I understand. So how does that get maintained? And look good?
It'll be maintained. By the landscape company or depending on. Which avenue we have to go, it might. Not be maintained if it's needs to be large enough where it's. Deep and just essentially operates as a holding tank and open air. Holding.
You guys know where that outlets, the detain pond?
Yeah, right here at the corner, there there's a third intersection that goes into the road commissions.
Oh, okay.
So that's where we're planning to. Put the basin. In this general area, and then I'll be connected with the pipe or addition.
We don't have any. Zoning variance about putting a detention pond in the front. Of your building?
So we've we've begun the site plan review for their project, but it's at this point they've had preliminary conversation, uh. Comments from Fresh Coast Planning and some preliminary comments from the engineer. But everything's been placed on pause until they. Got a determination from there, from the zoning board of the.
A homeowner can't put a garage without variants in front of their house, but we can put a detention pond. In front of the building on the roadside, either roadside.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything. That restricts where the retention ponds go, I know the development on Bonn Hall by twelve mile, the retention ponds are just right in front as well.
That's just driven by that outlet.
Yeah.
That we need that, so that's, I mean, we'll try to keep it as close to this corner as possible.
And that's because of the cost?
Well, if you if you put it up here to make it out. Have an outlet and to have an overflow becomes much trickier and, um. Not even, maybe not even possible.
But it's not. It's not an eyesore.
Right, no, we're we're making, I mean, we're following whatever the township's comments and, you know, we're.
And if you drive on Alpine, they're in front of, um, right next to all these, I think.
Yeah.
There's a retention pond right in the front there.
This will be dry.
Can you turn so the the public can see?
Maybe explain just like the. These are the original.
Sure.
Now those, you don't need a variance for. Even those others too.
These are what.
Those two are without the variance, that's the one with the variance.
Right.
That's a good point.
This is, this is what.
No, that's a good point though.
And if we are, yeah, so this has the the thirty-three parking spaces and the buffer here, seventy-five and. The small retention area here.
And then if we do have to do the four seventy-one spaces here. So I have to put another bar and row up there, extend this all the way right down to a monolode. Or that's one configuration, the second configuration is to push the whole building back and have this.
And Terry March, uh, Terry, so but your original comments about. Long gen, long gen. Yeah, so I want to make one point on this first. While they're talking through it, so if we. Deny this variance. They don't need to come to us, they could go and build it. With those other two, they have the option of doing those other two without asking for any variance.
Well, I do, I would like to address a couple of those comments, um, you know, I think, uh, Mr. Wister Bay made a comment around the master plan that. That was an incorrect comment that the parcel as whole that exists. Matches with the master plan said, so that parcel would still only be three hundred feet back from Sparta Avenue. Additionally, those other plans have not been through site plan review, so they would still have to meet their provisions. Um, of the zoning ordinance for buffers and landscaping and all those different pieces, so. You know. Maybe they would move things around, but that would still have to go through the site plan review process.
Yeah, thank you.
For this one, uh, as far as zoning ordinance, but that's puts it administratively, so that would come through Fresh Coast Planning. Um, there are provisions that if this becomes. I can't remember the exact language, but a a public concern. I, we do have the ability to bring it to the public or to the planning commission for further review, so if. You know, one of their plans that caused enough for worse, then that might result in. Being moved to the planning commission.
Yes, but with the zoning, if we meet. The ordinance and the requirements for the site plan.
Andrew, I want to get back to you.
Yeah, well, I think you've brought up a good point about. Once the parking lot's there, it's there, so. We've had Dollar General here as long as I can remember, um, how long have they been here, you know that?
I don't know that that location offhand.
So it's not, and it's not Dollar General going out of business.
No, no.
It's it's location, I mean, it's. If a store is not performing, they're closing or the surrounding area changes enough where the traffic just doesn't. Read anymore, I mean, it's, that happens, that's part of business, everybody does, I mean, it's. You know, every retail out there is opening and closing stores each year, if they're if they're a healthy company. That's what they do, right? And. This variance lives with the property. Not with. The company.
One one thought on that, and I, not to be contrary at all to to your concern on that. The only thing that I've seen in the past that would give some degree of protection for your concern on that is if the use changes. Then the the county road commission does have rights to review the driveway permit. Uh, and if there was a use that came in that was much more intense. Either in terms of parking demand and therefore the parking lot's going to overflow, so now we have concerns about traffic backing up onto Sparta. Commit, road commission's gonna say, we we rescind your permit until you make changes. Uh, so they would, they would have a potentially some teeth. To go back and say that, no, this change in use does not work unless you make changes to the site. Um, I I have seen that happen before, it's not.
Just the road commission, I'm not familiar with that piece. Is that where they'll do another study?
Yes, if if another use came in that the road commission had concern with, um, then they could require another study. Uh, for for that use and intensity.
What would trigger that? Because if another retailer bought this. And they want to use it as a.
Any change, any changes within the right of way. So it, I suppose it is possible that that a change could occur that would not.
Yeah.
Uh, would not require changes within the right of way, but if any permanent action was required, which usually is. That would trigger, but.
Okay, let's play the, so let's say the board here okay's your request tonight. And five years from now. There's. Complaints made to you. The road commissioner, M dot saying. There's accidents waiting to happen because people can't get in or out. What is, what's Dollar General gonna do then? Are you gonna be forced to make a bigger parking lot because of problems?
If there is a safety concern that was same way, that was precipitated by by any use that goes in, the the road commission still has. Jurisdiction to. Close that driveway or deal with that permit issue. Uh, if there is a safety concern.
So so the the people of the township of Sparta can. Five years from now, they're just tired of, we like to come here, but it's, there's never parking. That can start. The process of getting relooked. For a bigger parking lot. The most recent thing I've read on that actually happening. Is with a Chick-fil-A opening. But I mean, but that exact same thing, whereas now there's a line of cars waiting out to turn in to go right to a drive-through or something.
Well, and there's, there's other provisions, I know we had talked to Kevin about this as well, um. That we've seen in other ordinances, going back to kind of the conversation about some of the requirements and and that's bank parking. Similar to. Somewhat similar to what we're showing here where. In the event there is a a future need for more parking, you would design it in a way that it's it's shown. Where it can be, but not necessarily installed because you don't need it at the time, and then if that were to happen.
It doesn't have to be paved, I mean, it's, that's the question, I mean, if you, if you set it up for. The seventy-one spaces. But you only paid the front, kind of full parking. It can accommodate it if it's if needed.
Well, I don't have the exact language, and I think it differs by township or municipality, but. There, I believe, would be provisions in the bank parking for, in the event it's needed, what that needs to be.
Does that be part of? Our motion tonight?
If we decide to grant, as is, um. If there's issues in the future, they have to.
No, plan for bank. I mean, it's not unless you spell it out exactly. What the conditions for those issues would be. If you can't leave it open-ended and say, hey, if there's an issue, well. What defines an issue? And so you have to be very specific.
If there's problems with M dot or.
It's still hard to define like that, though, to approve something and leave it kind of open-ended like that. Would be very difficult to enforce. Down the road. I, you know, I think it's, uh. This can't be the first time someone's asked this question, if you guys grow.
Yeah.
What do you, I mean. You've done hundreds of these stores, what?
I can tell you that I. I've shown, but it it really depends on the ordinance, we've shown bank parking in the past. To, similar to what we're doing here, where we show that it can fit if it's needed, but we'll install what's on the site plan. And we have never gone back and had to install more parking. I've. Like I said, I I think.
What?
The only time I've installed over. Thirty-five or forty parking spots is a situation like this where we go to the ZBA and ask for a variance and it's denied and we have to just move forward.
If you were gonna do it, the restrictions I would put on it is that the minimum sales floor space is. X amount. If it's changed from just center, uh, selling the general merchandise to say maybe. They want to get into prepared food, they want to start doing that, where people are now coming in because they can pick up their home meal. So you'd want to start putting restrictions on what type of business. That is to restrict it, to keep the traffic down, because. I've seen that as well, I mean, it's, uh, with the company I worked for, we've changed our business model with some of our new stores. And the traffic has increased, and now we're drawing people in just. You know. They're in and out, uh, you know, so they're buying less, you know, you're picking up a lot more. Of that retail traffic, which is they're not buying as much, but they're in more people coming through. And so. Companies like that also change their business model, they do stuff in, so. It gets to be a slippery slope, it's how do you restrict? Some of these without doing it.
I have a question maybe for Kevin, um. What is the definition of a parking space? Is there, is it have to be asphalt, does it have? And the only reason I was thinking is like, if you had like thirty-three. Paved spots and you have the ability that was, uh. I'm trying not to sound gravel or something that. Is easily. It would be then is similar to what you're talking about with your bank parking, you'd have it already there.
Available.
Available there and but I I guess my point would be. I'm trying to not to get into the details, but you see what I mean, like. Seventy one spots, but they're not all yellow lined and and asphalt. I don't know that answer, do you?
That's where I'm really trying to find some of the provisions, I knew the, I know that there are provisions around the the width and length of the lot, the parking spaces, you know. Trying to refine that language in the zoning ordinance right now that talks to the material.
So I looked into that, you actually.
Yeah.
Had a specific material for mobile home parks. But we don't find anything for a retail development like this, so we, um. That was one option that we're thinking if we have to, you know, go with the full seventy one spaces that we would consider gravel.
Sure.
Grass.
Or crushed concrete or something that would be a material would be so expensive, but it'd be there in case you needed the area.
Right, yeah, and in the bank parking I've seen in the past is much more of. It's just grass, basically, so that if you are. If there is the need that arises for that to be installed, it's not used as overflow flow parking, the agreement is that if the need arises. Like you mentioned that you have to come back and install it. Continuous with the rest of the development, it's not something that. We make you, or you'd have to go park in the grass or on the gravel, we we did discuss with Kevin, though, originally. What constitutes parking surfaces, because. If it's not going to be used, obviously. There's all everything we're talking about, but at the end of the day, it's a business too, I mean, there's money associated with job in the size of your parking lot, so that was something that we looked into and it didn't seem. That there was.
I was trying to come up with a solution because I didn't want to, and that's I can see we're going to be faced with a potentially. To not grant the variance potentially, but if you have the space available, you say, yeah, I got seventy one parking spaces, I only have thirty three that are asphalt and 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 lined. But then we don't set a precedence in you still have the space available. To be to be potentially utilized if you even want to do it.
And I'd be be all for it, I don't know how that would work, but.
Well, I think it goes back to, we still need to look into probably a definition of what would constitute, and maybe that comes into the site plan. Maybe the one you go to the. For the site plan, is that fair, Kevin, or is that not committed to that necessarily?
No, that's definitely would be a part of the second interview and, you know, catching up with some of the conversations, you know, interpreting the zoning ordinance, there's sometimes there's a level of matching that intent. So. The patent that's not so clear, um, so when we're doing a plan. Is the intent to put in thirty three pages parking spaces and then. Forty gravel, you know, the gravel can be maintained and all those other things, so it's we're making sure not just the letter of the zoning ordinance, but the impact is carried as well, so, good.
I think that'd be. Kind of tricky without getting.
Yeah, sure. Yeah.
Well, and I think, again, going back to the intent of the ordinance, I mean. To try and. Design and develop this piece of property that fits in best with the community is. I think what we're after ultimately, like we mentioned, you know. We can do it a couple ways, we can do it.
Yeah.
A couple different ways with seventy one parking spots. We're very confident that we don't need that, and I think from. My experience with Dollar General, from what Dollar General said, reviewing plans and and even from what TJ said, and kind of the science and the data, it's.
The concern I have with the drawing you have, the original drawing you have. Is. That building moves with those other two parking lots, right? Or is it just the parking lot expands? Does that building in the exact same spot as the other one?
Yeah, this one had to shift to the west.
Yeah, what about the other one, does it?
It shifts back.
Yeah, what about that one?
This one is fairly close, I believe, I think it did have the.
So.
It looks like.
Yeah.
Same, you know, it's.
The other one had to go back. Double roll.
I would just leave that one up. Something. But no, don't have the potential control.
No, I meant on the floor.
Yeah.
So we can just.
And just leaving them right there is fine, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe in this one, it's the same. Cause this was more of kind of that banked approach.
They're both seventy one?
Yeah.
But. The problem is, is if you build that there. How would you grow that to seventy one?
It would look like this one here.
But then you didn't fill in the retention ponds, it would change your retention.
It would have to shift.
Yeah, unless you built it round behind the building, right?
But that's possible, it is possible to have that retention basin, you know, shifted over there, so if it ever had to expand. That basin, I mean, there's movement in that area.
Right.
Okay, okay, so the drawing on the left on the floor. Seems like that would be your final site plan. But you would. You would not, it seems like if you want yours variance today, you would build it like that.
But they don't need a variance for the bottom.
I know, but in anticipation of if you want to put more parking spots in, you'd have to have two detention ponds. Parking to the south and parking to the north.
Okay, you're saying if we built it like this and then if needed.
You don't want that. Would you exactly build the retention ponds like on that drawing?
So that in the future it could be. Yeah.
Yeah, I can see that. But you're you're. Seventy percent confident that you won't go over thirty three cars in any single time.
And well, I'm sorry to cut you off, how many spots are out here between two oh one marketplace and the current Dollar General? Everybody know ballpark?
I don't know. I know it's thirty one.
Five over there, is there?
I counted it.
I built it.
I think it was, I might have counted it.
There's probably thirty.
Kind of to your point, Andrew, that that to me was similar because it's kind of by itself and. It doesn't share with the bank too, I mean, they could, but they don't, it's far enough driveway that they go. Thought that was a thirty one?
Yeah, I it was a long time ago, but generally back then it was, it was thirty.
Yeah, because there's a couple of spots where the semis have to come in to unload, and so. There's actually spaces that they're not there that would be.
How long ago was that? Who?
Five?
I was gonna say maybe two thousand sixteen seventeen.
That sounds right.
Okay, so five, six years, we made the calendar, thinks that. It was thirty spots back then, and now we're at thirty three. For an average, so if we take that into an equation, in five, six years, are we going to be at thirty six?
No, the 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 difference is, and I can explain that, the.
Company grow, I guess it's just.
Well, if if. It's not that as much as. They change their mix, they change their business model because. The environment changes and they have to change something to.
Of course.
Get customers coming in.
Well, yeah, I had noticed that with with gardens, the Alpine location.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know.
There is that, the 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 other reason too, from strictly a Dollar General standpoint is Kent City, the original prototype was ninety one hundred square feet. Hmm, this is ten thousand six hundred and four.
Oh, okay, I guess. Smaller square footage.
Glad you said that, because I thought it was just a little bit smaller, but.
We have any, are are you guys neighbors, are we?
We live on eleven.
You're on eleven mile, do we have a, do we potentially have a neighbor that lives to the north? You're a good chance.
So at this point in time, um. We can, we'll come back to it. But I think I'd like to hear the public comment.
Sorry as well, I was just kind of curious on public comment.
Yep. So so let's go through. And uh. Is there, let's start on this side, any public comment over there, any want to participate? Coming down the line here.
I just have a question.
Would you step up and just state your name and address and. And uh, naming it first form and.
Gail Katz and I live on eleven mile road, um. We're the second house. From Sparta Avenue, second house west, we live on the north side. Um. We lived there for thirty five years.
Back property. And you.
Yeah. Here's the.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was eleven miles right there, on the bottom.
Here's their neighbor's house. And there's a house right here. And I work on that.
Yeah, okay.
We're just thinking now that they put that, um.
The rental place on Sparta Avenue. I feel bad for those people that live in the house right there because it's like daylight all night long. Um.
I don't know about the semi traffic pulling in there or. Us trying to get out, the people calling in, people coming up to Sparta Avenue. Putting their blinker on to turn left and then being rear ended because.
Cars are not paying attention. People just don't pay attention, but just increase traffic flow and.
Traffic and you have them down. Coming down eleven mile. Which is gonna end, people are helping, but. You know, they're like, hey, let's go check this out, we have kids and grandkids and. It just, it seems like it's going to be a lot of traffic. And a lot of congestion. So that's our concern.
I have a question for you that I think you. It's kind of interesting because I can see myself in your position if I live there and how I would look at this. And it seems. You brought up the lights and things like that, in some ways, I'm not answering for you, but I want to know your answer, would you rather have a smaller parking lot or a bigger parking lot? Because with the bigger parking lot, you're going to have the exterior lighting and. Things to have for se- for the security for that. So the footprint becomes bigger.
Right.
Um. E- e- even if it's not used, it's still there.
No, I I don't want a bigger parking lot, I don't.
So it it's zone commercial.
Right.
So. You know. They have the ability to build something and they can build a bigger of this and.
Right, and I just think once. Whether it's Dollar General or whomever gets a foothold. It's not going to stop here. And I mean, that's progress. Started approaching. Down our our road, and I mean, if somebody wants to buy our house. Zone the whole thing commercial. You know, have at it, but. It it's just, it's. It's not going to stop.
Uh, I have a question, these guys kind of related to that. If you have a smaller parking lot, there's, if I remember, there's trees along that old. Like between their house and where you're proposed.
On the backside.
Yeah, are are those?
The whole egg tube.
Maybe I'm trying to make it simple, are the trees going to stay if you put the small parking lot, or are they going to have to go because you have to expand the bigger parking lot, I guess I just wanted.
I think that buffer, that egg tube buffer, that's going to remain natural.
Okay. That's a dotted line right there, yeah.
We're going to keep as much. Natural as possible, but with a lot of parking, that's going to have to trip over, potentially would have to trip over and.
Yeah, maybe neither of your drawings cross. At least.
Mr. If I can, you know, a part of site plan review too, that'll also be a piece of it is with, you know, lighting plans and and making sure that. The impact stays on site, so for for buffering, are there light plants? Show that. Not going to have an impact on.
You know, because we move out to the country because we like it. Quiet, dark, and then you get.
Chevy dealership and.
Right, and we, like, we can hear it and we can see those lights too from our house, but.
But I get four people here. Oh, I got, I have LEDs on there and it's like the whole sign is going to come. I'll get to go.
Yeah.
So any other comments you'd like to make?
Nope, that's mine.
Thank you. Uh, public portion's still open, so is there any other public comment, any other comments publicly made? Uh, this time I'd like to close the public comment and open it back up. To more and more discussion. So, uh. You know. I want I want to get back to my initial concern, I mean, it's a, you know, this variance stays with the property. Uh, we can't control how long they're going to stay, and they may be there forever. They may decide to move, they may decide to change their business model. This variant stays with the property. And. The way that our ordinance is written, maybe our ordinance needs to be adjusted. But that's not our decision, that that's something that needs to go back to. The planning commission. Right, and be addressed there. So, uh.
With.
Good. Um, that's my personal thoughts on this right now, so, um, I know we haven't gone through. Uh, if you got them, but uh. Uh, seven, you know, the the condition standards.
Standards.
Well, we can run through them and.
Do you need a copy?
Of the standard?
Yeah, I've got a copy of the map on the standards.
Yeah, John's got my copy, so yeah.
I'll take the copy.
Actually, that's all yours.
Yeah, I got a copy here too. So, uh, before we go through these, is there any other comments that you guys opinions you'd like to, yeah, we can run through these? Good. Let me read through and then uh, uh, we can discuss them. Uh, these are non-use variances, zoning board appeals or have the authority to grant non-use variances related to construction, structural changes. Or alterations of buildings or structures related to dimensional requirements of zoning ordinance. Or to any other non-use related standard in this chapter, only when. All of the following conditions exist. One, the need for the variance is due to practical difficulties in carrying out the strict leather of the zoning ordinance. Arriving from unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property involved such as narrowness. Shallowness, shape, water, topography. I don't think they've met this standard and just with having two alternate drawings that show that it can be met. I don't think the standard's met. So, um, what are you guys thoughts on that?
No, I agree with you.
And that's kind of what Kevin says too.
Yeah, we we can talk through that or just kind of uh, not both.
No, I think we're good.
Okay, yeah. So. The next one. Asserted difficulty is not due to the applicant's personal or economic difficulty. Increased financial return alone shall not be deemed sufficient to warrant a variance. Well, this one, I'm not sure it's met either because the reason for doing it is. Um. Really, it's a financial. You know, it's a keep everything in control.
It's not wasted money, it's not spending money that you don't potentially need to spend.
Whether our law is written correctly or not. That's open for discussion, and I would say it's worth challenging our board on it, but. The way this is. It. You know, to follow the letter of the law. The reason they don't want to do it is because of primarily the cost, I, there is some other. Reasons that they cited as well, but I think, you know, it's a financial, uh, you know, with the maintenance and everything else. You know, that's the biggest decision why they don't want to do it, you know, is they feel the benefit can be used as well. But I don't think this one's met, that's that's my opinion, uh, let's go down the line on this one, what do you guys? Think on this, Andrew?
No, I don't think it's met.
John?
I. I think it's mad.
You think this one's mad?
Yeah.
Can you explain? I'd like to hear your. Comments on why.
It it's not financial return alone, it's practicality, it's common sense. It's a letter that we got from. Dollar General and their study that they did with fish packets.
I think we're, sorry to cut you off, and we're just kind of looking at that item number two, though.
Item number two.
Uh, difficulty to. Is it causing financial hardship? Or to do this, and and that's clearly not meaning that, because they can, they still, they gave us two other plans. Um, so just that, that's kind of what we're currently discussing, is just that this met, this section is not that number two.
I I still stand with.
Fine, okay. Um, I'd like to hear your thoughts.
I don't believe it.
And Ken?
I agree with you guys, I don't believe it's bad.
Okay. The need for the requested variance is not the result of actions of the property owner or previous property owner. So the need for the requested variance is not the result or actions of the property or previous property owner, this one. So the need for the requested variance is not the result or actions of the property or previous property owner. This one. Um, I would say. The need for this variance is. It's not anything they did that's causing it's just, it's more of a wine. You know, they don't want to build more than they feel they need. So it's hard to say whether this is met or not met on this, the way it's worded.
You guys. I consider that, yeah, I can consider.
It is kind of worded, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Some of them are a little redundant and how they.
Well, this one, yeah, I mean, it's, I go either way on this one, whether it's met or not, I don't. You know, I don't think it's anything they did that's requiring that they can't do anything else requiring the variance, so. Let's move on to the next one. Um, strict compliance with the regulations governing the area setback, frontage height. Bulk density or other dimensional requirements will unreasonably prevent the property owner from using the property for committed purposes. Or will render conformity with those regulations unnecessarily for instance. Um, I don't think this one is met because they've shown that, uh, they can fall within the strict compliance. And still put up, you know, put up a business.
Agreed.
Agreed. Requested variance is the minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice to the applicant. As well as the other property owners in the district. Yeah, it's. I I don't think this one. Really is met for just because of the other reasons as well. I mean, it's a. The minimum variance necessary to do substantial justice when. They have drawings that show that they could actually meet the requirements. Any comments on that one? The need for the requested variance is not based primarily on non-conforming use of nearby lands, structures, but. I would say this one is met because. They're not basing it on surrounding areas, so I don't see any problems with this one. Really, I think the. You know, number one right there and. And, uh, uh, you know, a couple of these other ones and and really our direction. Is they have to meet all of them.
Yeah.
In order to make it and. You know, it's, we could probably get by and say they need two or three of these. But it's far from meeting all of them. So. Whether we agree with all the law is written as is right now, whether it should be maybe. Unreasonable amount, that should be addressed with the board. It's not, it really isn't. Something that, uh, we approve variances and keep approving variances of the board change, but that's not how. We're supposed to conduct business, you're enough. I mean, it's a. If we feel that we don't agree with something is, we can put a recommendation to the board to say, hey, can you relook at this? Um, and so based on this. You know, they're coming in with proposal that's less than half. Of what our regulations state. And so maybe our ordinance is written a little bit too restrictive. And so that's something we can talk about and we can, uh, look at if if we don't approve this. We could also look at making a motion, bring something up to the board and say, hey, can you revisit parking lots? And they could bring it up at the next meeting. That's something we can do. After reviewing something like this, it's just a recommendation. We can't influence it, but something that we can do. If it's something that we don't agree with, I'm not saying I do or don't. But their proposals less than half. And they have documentation. That shows that they don't need it. They don't need some. Based on square footage, so maybe our calculations are beyond a potential standpoint.
Kevin, do you have any thoughts on this? I know we talk about sometimes. General principles of kind of what Terry's saying, that it it comes to us in terms of his point, we don't get to change the rules. Or for that matter, get to compromise necessarily and say. Yeah, we understand what you're talking about. It makes realistic sense, but definitely not the decision before us, right?
Right, yes, the review of the standard. So tonight, whatever the decision's made, that would be the only place where. Whether it was approved or denied, which, you know, advise the ZBA to speak to the standards and be specific.
Yeah.
In your approval or denial.
And then we could make a separate recommendation to the board to say, hey, can you revisit this? With the lighting commission. So what our ruling right now with the ordinances. For every square footage of building, you have to have a certain amount of parking space, hundred fifty.
It's based on for retail development, um, if I can remember the exact calculation. Uh, but for every so certain amount of square footage, you have to provide one parking space. So was then looking at that, the square footage of the building, dividing by, let's say, whatever that number is.
And you know, and so we can vote on this, but then we can, uh, maybe look at. Adding something, can we still should be able to maybe talk about this, add add modify the agenda, add something to the agenda. To talk through, maybe putting a recommendation. To say, they don't look at sales floor, they look at total building square, like they mentioned past.
Yeah, that's a good point.
So, yeah, say, hey. Zoning board or, um, not so, uh, but, uh, planning commission, can you look at this? One of the things we want you to look at is. The way it's worded is based on square footage of the building. Can you look at?
Square.
Square, sales, sales for, sales, you know, what's the square footage of the sales for? And the calculation isn't correct and I'd want to submit, you know, this type of study. To them to take a look at as well. So we can put that recommendation to them. They don't have to follow it, but it's it's something. We can ask them to revisit it. And I think it'd be a healthy thing to, for them to take a look at based on what's coming on with this.
So to your point, and that comes more on the site plan review that you would actually go there with a proposal to potentially say. We have to provide space enough for whatever the seventy one spots, but. It really goes back to that question about paid, not paid, grass, not grass, whatever that definition is.
So you have something.
No, I was, I'm just trying to see, but that's correct. You would just, we would design it in a way similar to. Just to give an example of the bank or deferred parking, we would design it in a way like this. We would have to still design the stormwater to handle all this impervious, but we just would not pave. This section of parking and in this chunk here, we would just pay what's here.
Sure.
And then in the event. Some of the concerns that were brought up tonight, they're backing up onto the highway, you can't maneuver all of that. I don't know specifically how, where that'd be a question for Kevin probably, but you'd get a letter or something saying that we're having these issues. You know, and then we'd have to work through either installing just this section here or all of them or whatever the case, but.
That makes sense to me. I think that's a great idea, so. Um, I can't.
So how? How would we?
I don't have a plan tonight, there would sure have though. No, and it's not up to us, that that's for them to go back, so. I would. And I can't make a motion, but I would like to see somebody make a motion. I want to ask Kevin this is. Could we make a motion to deny this, uh, variance? But add it, um, add a recommendation to our planning commission to review. This ordinance in their next or future meeting. And look at the, um, number, you know, basing it based on. Sales floor square footage instead of building square footage. And take a look at maybe the number of spots per square footage again, revisit that. And take a look at an option of banked parking. Like they said, so would we do that all in one motion or would we? Do the motion to just deny this and then come back around because that's not on the agenda, but it's really part of this. So would we just find it at one, say, we wanted to buy this and we want to make a recommendation for the. Planning commission to revisit this and look at business.
I would recommend that you would keep them separate, keep them, you know, your decision on their variance request itself and then if the. The ZBA would like to make a recommendation or request of planning commission. Make it as a second.
Okay.
I'm torn. I I like that plan better because of the impact on the neighborhood. Is less.
Yeah, you're right.
So I'm, if if we're gonna.
But I don't think our ordinance is written right.
I agree, I agree. So then we have that we're setting a precedent and that the ordinance isn't maybe up to date. So then. So they can go and build one of those and have the thing lit up.
But they could go back to the planning commission and say, hey, this is going and they could be, that's a public hearing as well. That's a public meeting, so they could attend that. And when they talk through it, they could present some of the reasons why.
On how long they want to wait to build. Will they spend the extra and do this or do they wait for a change in the ordinance?
Well, I mean, it's, you know, if it's, uh, gets addressed in the next. Meeting, not tomorrow's meeting, but, uh, next month's meeting in the January meeting. You know, you're you're talking of deferring it one month.
Well, that would. No, I wouldn't necessarily go on to the January meeting and have to discuss with my chair, they improve their agenda. Um, you know, one of the other pieces in my head is right now, as far as zoning laws puts this under administrative review, but if there's a public concern. It goes to the the planning commission. So if the ZBA did make a motion to request the the planning commission to review those provisions. I think that was for their whole side playing going, okay, you guys have a lot of questions around these things. This gets brought to the planning commission to review their whole site plan and that process. It might bring along the conversation around the parking provisions of zoning laws.
Is if we just approve a variance, I I've seen that in the past where we just approve a variance and nothing changes with the law.
Yeah, I I agree. I think definitely some discussion, I mean, the, uh, this is the floor plan. Like you said, the the, how much square footage is your sales floor?
Um, it is, I think, thousand seven hundred.
Eight thousand?
Yeah, it's like.
Warehousing offices, bathrooms, so.
Yeah, it's like, I think one thousand eight hundred and seventy five, it's like roughly twenty five feet.
But I agree with you completely that, that that request needs to be made, that needs to be reviewed. I I just think that seventy seven spaces or however many it is, is ridiculous for an hour. That's just, that's just plain. So, and clearly Dollar General's been here for a long time. They want to invest dollars in Sparta. They're following the master plan of where we want to build buildings and commercial areas. I don't think, I think they want to be here.
And and I think something like this brings up healthy discussion with our planning commission where we need to address some of these. You know, it's a growing community and and, you know, we have to be receptive to. The right businesses and not discourage businesses from coming into the community as well.
Okay, so Chick-fil-A, how big is their store?
And that's not a retail. That's, that's, that's a quick service. Okay, that's different.
So whether.
They need eighty spots for that.
And a long enough drive. Okay, so Chick-fil-A. They print what? For every fifty square feet, they need. One spot, spot. Is there, is that correct, Kevin?
I don't know. Not a retail, it's not, it's a different order. Since this is, Chick-fil-A is not retail.
I understand, but what is that requirement? Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure on the top of my head, but I believe the one fifty was the strictest. There was a lot of one space per two hundred feet or one space per two forty.
So one fifty would could possibly be for Chick-fil-A in Sparta.
Probably less. I mean, it's, uh, you know, it's like you said, it's like one for two hundred square feet or something like that. And I don't know what it is, but it's different. It's not considered retail spaces. So.
That's been said.
Yes.
Guess I didn't determine the rules either, but I'm gonna make a motion that we deny the variance tonight.
Support. We have a motion to deny the variance.
The one recommendation request.
We have a motion to deny the variance because of the reason.
Not meeting the standards, uh, or not being all the standards of keep the political correct. Maybe met two or three to your point, Terry, and but did not meet all the standards in our verbiage, that's what it's supposed to be.
And we, do we want to specific, do we want to be specific on which ones?
That makes sense.
Didn't meet number one. Um, number two was questionable.
And then Mr. Chairman, with that motion, we always recommend being specific. So if you're denying it, why? Um, if you didn't want to go through the whole motion, it is an option of the ZBA to adopt as part of your approval or denial. Um, our memo. For reference, why those standards were stacked, you know.
That's if you agree with. So.
So I guess like to Kevin's point, I'm making a motion based on their recommendation because. They also, at every one of those standards, they've had a comment at the bottom of them and. I guess in essence, we agreed with their recommendation.
So you're making a motion.
For those reasons that I would deny the variance because it did not meet standards as per the.
Per the recommendation. There goes plan.
Right.
And you want to second that? Yep.
I do.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table to deny the variance, uh, because the standards were met. Uh, as per the documentation of their coast planning. Uh, written here. And we have a second on the table. By Mike. So Ken motion. Mike seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Motion carried unanimous. Would somebody like to make it maybe a second motion? I'll make the motion that we.
Recommendation to the, would that be to the planning commission, Kevin? Or would the motion be the next, like to revisit our. Says. Parking space per square foot.
Yeah, I'd 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 like to do it whether these guys come or not. I'd like to have us take a look at that.
Yeah.
Oh, I I think it's.
Yeah, it would be either a request or recommendation. Um, you could do it to the planning commissioner of the board. Eventually, it's gonna have to go to the planning commission to start the process, but. Either way, and then just get carried forward to the body.
Okay, so we have a recommendation. That's sent to the planning commission to revisit this. Ordinance. For the following reasons of. Um, we talked, we talked, uh, uh, recommendation for floor space and not your sales space.
Maybe all the.
Not building.
Yeah, actually. Yeah, actually, like, look at all the criteria that determines that because right now we have basically this cookie cutter.
Right.
Deal at one fifty.
Yeah.
And there's no opportunity to potentially.
So let's let's list these out. Well, let's list these out before you make the recommendation then and and kind of agree to what we want to send the recommendation. Do before we do it.
Also back to us.
We said. Uh, one, we want them to look at the. Um, instead of using the building square footage, look at the sales floor square footage. That's one.
Is there anything else that we're missing in in determining like, like as you look at it from out there? Like what you would love want us to.
One thing.
To make better, I guess.
One thing that I've seen in time that wouldn't necessarily fall under the DBA's purview, but. Been talking about the day parking and that would be something that could be written for organs where we would.
Yep.
Not necessarily come for a formal variance, but. Show ways that kind of all where those spaces go.
You'd have that.
So.
Already set there and actually identify that on your print, for example.
So so the first one was use buildings or use the. Sales floor square footage instead of building square footage. The second one was revisit the number of parking squat uh, parking spaces per square footage. We think it's excessive.
Yep, or can be excessive.
Yeah, can be excessive.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, it's it should be. Per, yeah, yeah.
I think so, like with a traffic study to um, trying to do this in the right language, um. The difference between fifteen to twenty transactions per hour versus. Something that people would be there for over an hour.
Yeah, it it it's hard to do.
Know how to identify.
I I think you what you want to do is to say allow for banked. Allow for banked uh, parking spots.
Yeah.
If business.
Yeah.
Deems it at a future point, so allow for. Bank parking spots to be. Set aside in the site plan.
For space.
Yeah, space for that in the site plan.
So what's the definition of banked?
It's actually designated, can't be built on it. It's set aside.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
But I think that's a pretty good summary. Plan for parking that's not.
It's in the drawing, part of the part of the site plan drawn in. It's just not paid.
Yeah, part of this. Part of everything.
Yeah, sure. I was just gonna add a little clarification, you know, Kevin. May well be able to add this information too, but a lot of a lot of language that I see in other ordinances relative to parking. Would be exactly what you're talking about with gross square footage versus net square footage. So that that net takes away the. Or usable floor area.
Sure.
Um. Something else that I see in is land bank parking and 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 a description of that in the ordinance um, definitions of terms, right, that would describe. What what is land bank parking? Excuse me, um, something else that I see is a provision to um. Uh, for the planning commission and not to have to come to a ZBA to approve a a parking uh. A lower number of parking spaces based on an engineering study. Uh, based on IT or urban land institute shared parking calculations. So that's something that I'll. Sometimes gets written into ordinance where it doesn't have to come before a ZBA. It's not a variance, but it's allowable uh, by an engineering study. Um.
Who approves that engineering study?
That would be the planning commission and and or your consultants.
Would you be able to provide uh, like the document or letter that could be provided them as well? I think we need to call out as much of this.
Hmm.
But I think having it where an engineer. Also provided something where they could look at it at the same time.
Sure, I'll I'll talk with uh. With them and make sure that that's.
Yeah, we.
Okay, I don't want to get in.
Right.
Crossing lines here, but it um, to be to be.
Or I it it is totally, I'm not gonna say you do it, but. If if we got our.
Right.
Our our township has our own. But I think I think you guys have some thoughts in it as well that if you want the planning commission to review it as they're going through this.
Right, right.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah.
My. But it's not not a requirement. We're gonna write it as best we can.
Yeah, it I think my point is that um, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, that this is something that other communities have faced and that there is language out there. Um, that can be referenced. So however, we can be helpful.
Yeah.
For the application and for the township tree, certainly, yeah.
And don't forget, we got Kevin right here.
Right, then will be one of the abilities too is with both Ken and I.
Yeah.
Um, you know, taking back an intent when the planning commission reviews it. Um. You know, they might keep it focused or it could, you know, open up a lot of things, but we can provide examples from other communities um, and and. Example language, if that's what the planning mission desires.
I think that's a great point where he brought up though, that would be the opportunity at the site plan review or whatever, if it did come before the planning commission, because similar to a. PUD, if you. That gets really where you kind of customize it based on the actual. Knowledge and the and the information that you have on that specific instance where in this case, it's kind of just a generic thing. And in this case, it. Probably penalized you guys for that reason.
Well, and I and I think that. I think that your board and your planning commission and township board can move forward with that regardless of this. This is still something they can report. Um, because however they decide to go, you know, they're like discussed, they're currently in a administrative process. Um, not not in a planning commission, but the the last thought that I had was that you could also potentially. Uh, specify instead of just retail globally, there are more specific line use characterizations that possibly could go into your ordinance that would. Um, be more specific to that use and density and square footage and what it actually.
So I want to get back to you said, uh. Uh, prove parking based on what type of study was it?
Uh, an engineering study. Um. Based on. The Institute of Transportation Engineers. And or Urban Land Institute.
What I'm gonna do is have you write that down and you're gonna hand it to me and I'm gonna make the motion.
John's the engineer. True.
I mean, do we have to capture every detail?
No, I don't. I I think there's a lot to look at. I mean, you know, look at, you know, just, you know. There's like you said, there's a lot of language out there because the town folks are doing it.
Right.
Just maybe time to revisit some of that.
And maybe we at least hit the high points like these guys have helped us with. Like if we can say, well, we need to look.
You know, we talked that uh, you know, uh, look at sales for square footage. Uh, versus building square foot, the gross versus net that we brought up. Uh, we talked about uh, number of spots per square foot. Revisit that. We think it's excessive. Uh, we talked about uh, the opportunity to include bank parking based on. Uh, need. We talked about allowing the planning commission to approve parking based on. Engineering studies by a couple of different institutions that are being dragged down the main.
That's okay. ITU LI.
We'll put an asterisk by it.
Think it was one more.
So in essence, what we're doing is. Either like or making a motion. And recommend to the planning commission.
Were you, but as Gavin mentioned to the.
But actually to the board, is that what you said?
You can do it to either or.
Obviously, you go to the board, you go to the board, the board will hold on it and then whether or not they recommend it to the planning commission to start.
Um, simplify the process. I mean, you got your planning commission representatives. If you make the motion.
Because you make this recommendation. Don't don't take this the wrong way, but like, okay, what's it? Is it binding? I mean, is.
No, it's just a recommendation.
It's a great idea.
Review it.
Personally, great idea. Yeah, okay.
And think about these things when you review it, think about. Using the sales square foot.
Right.
Versus building. Think about. Looking at the square footage per spot. Is that the right number? Think about bank parking. Can you incorporate that in? Um, you know, because a lot of these points I think are good points, uh, and allowing, you know, maybe you think of these now. The planning commission decides, yeah, we don't want to change. That's fine. They can do that, but at least they talk to them.
Yeah.
That's all all we want you guys to do is.
But and your point personally, I might go one way, but there's seven of us, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, understood.
It's nothing is binding. They can't do anything. This is just a recommendation to look at it. Take these points into consideration when you're discussing.
Makes sense.
So does Secretary feel that she has captured?
So the VBA is going to recommend for the planning commission review the parking requirements. Um, they should go down and with a view, looking at the sales floor square footage. Or is it building? They consider the number of states required per square foot. That you allow for bank parking spots to be set aside at the site plan. And then planning mission would approve the parking requirement change based on engineering study.
Yeah, at least we value it. Yep. So is that your motion?
Yeah, that makes sense.
So, yeah, so we have a motion on the table. By Ken.
Yes, as per what Terry and.
I'll second. And Andrew seconds.
But I think it is important.
Ken motion.
I catch everything, you know.
Andrew second. And this is just a regular recommendation from the plan. Uh, all of the papers signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. Motion carried unanimous.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thanks. I'm sorry it didn't go your way. We're trying to do what we can to help you guys. Last item on the agenda is the motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion to adjourn by Mike.
I'll support it.
Ten seconds. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All of the phone. Motion period unanimous.